Good evening, everyone. I apologize that we're starting our meeting a little late. The executive session did go a little long, so we appreciate your patience. Today is Monday, May 23rd, 2011. If you could all please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance, please. Thank you. And to make this meeting official, I ask Clerk Spencer to call the roll.
Pezza.
Here.
Guttenkopf. Absent.
Leader.
Here.
Dunn.
Here.
Bram.
Here.
Polomsky.
Here.
York.
Here.
Hipskin.
Here.
Healy.
Here.
Levin.
Here.
Kennedy.
Here.
Morley.
Here.
Wagner.
Here.
Mulliner. Thirteen present, one absent.
Thirteen present, one absent. We have an official forum. Not on the agenda tonight is the open forum, but we will offer that here shortly. But before we go to the open forum, the public forum, I would like to present a GFOA award recognition to Marilyn Gaston, who's our Finance Director. Before I ask Marilyn to come up, I just want to read a little brief information about this particular award. Roughly 11 percent of municipalities in the state of Illinois receive this award. So it's a very prestigious award that not many municipalities receive. The city's received its first certificate for achievement for fiscal 1990 audit and has received the award every year since then. Twenty-one consecutive years. So the books in the city of Elmhurst, I think, are very, very in good order. They passed the audit test and also have won some prestigious awards, of which I will be presenting this shortly. Ms. Peg Orson was very instrumental in helping us achieve this as well. She, I believe, works for the auditing company that works along with Ms. Gaston. We use a third-party auditing company to make sure that our internal books are in order. And so with that, I'd ask Marilyn Gaston and Ms. Peg Orson to please meet me at the podium for the presentation of the award. After I saw Peg's face, I realized she does work for the city. And so she's Marilyn's right-hand person. I'm like, wait a minute. This lady, she's not working for the auditing firm here. This certificate of achievement for excellence in financial reporting presented to the city of Elmhurst, Illinois, for its comprehensive annual financial report for the fiscal year ended April 30th, 2010. Certificate of Achievement for Excellence in Financial Reporting is presented by the Government Finance Officers Association of the United States and Canada to government units and public employment retirement systems whose comprehensive annual financial reports achieve the highest standards in government accounting and financial reporting. Marilyn, thank you so much. Always a great job. In fact, thank you so much as well, too.
It's always a pleasure to address you about this award. It is a behind-the-scenes type of thing, but it's something that we're very proud of. And Peg has been our accounting manager for over 20 years, and she's the one that deserves the credit for this award. The audit is her responsibility. She obviously takes it very seriously. She does a great job. And, you know, it is a finance department effort, but she makes us mind our appeals and cues, and that's how it gets done. The proof is in the pudding with the audit and the award. And also, the auditors present a management letter every year. And the management letter provides you, the council, with areas that we can improve upon. And I'm happy to say, most years, we have no management letter comments. And that's a tribute to the staff and particularly to Peg. So, thank you very much.
I'd also like to recognize Tom Trizine, who's Marilyn's Assistant Director. And Tom does a great job in working with Marilyn. And we appreciate all your hard work as well, too. So we know it's a team out there, and we appreciate your good work. So with that, I will go to the public forum portion of our meeting. And I ask Clerk Spencer, is there anyone signed up today for public forum?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, we have a couple. Tamara Brenner, 137 North Caroline Avenue.
Tamara, again, three minutes, and we appreciate your time today.
Thanks. I do appreciate the mayor's apology for the late start of the meeting tonight. That's great. We started 35 minutes late this time. There's been multiple late starts recently. I would like to suggest that if the executive committee is going to go seriously overtime, that maybe the committee considers adjourning and reconvening after the city council meetings, so as not to keep the community waiting for 7:30 meeting start time that everybody's here for. That's point one. A little extra point for tonight. The thing I wanted to mention or speak about tonight was the agenda item regarding the committee assignments that are submitted by the mayor for consideration tonight, now some seven weeks after the election. If anyone was still in doubt that the political calculations are going into decision-making in this town, I think those doubts should be put to rest with these committee assignments. I noticed the first time the mayor made committee assignments a couple of years ago, I wasn't really paying that close attention to city politics, but it seems like it was the same kind of game, if you will, going on at that time. Saw a similar thing with the recent issue with the library trustee, lack of reappointment, and now again with these committee assignments. Now, I'm sure that the two newest people on the council are quite capable and competent, but they still happen to have zero experience on this council right now. And assigning them to vice president or vice chairman positions on committees seems a little interesting to me. It seems like there could have been other choices rather than that. I do realize it's the mayor's prerogative as to how he makes these assignments, but let there be no question that it definitely appears like politics are well in play here, and I think it's a shame that that's the case in a town like Elmhurst.
Thank you.
Next, we have Darlene Heslop, 200 North Michigan Avenue, Apartment 227.
There was a question last week regarding the Edison Garage that was during public forum, and it is my understanding that the $2.5 million grant obtained from Metro for the purpose of financing the Edison Street Garage could be thought of as a no-interest long-term loan. In exchange for the $2.5 million upfront, the city agreed not only to set aside parking designated strictly for commuters, but to a revenue-sharing plan, in essence, payment over a very long time, similar to a mortgage. And the city knew this from day number one, that this was going to be the case. And it did end up saving the taxpayers from having to pay additional interest on interest-bearing bonds in order to finance this project. However, this is evidence that nothing in life is ever truly free. And also, as a city, it would be nice to have things made much clearer, as I not only had to explain this to several taxpayers, but also to another elected official. Also, now that committee assignments have been made, and you all have been briefed on the Open Meetings Act, I would like for the proper authorities to come up with a fair and equitable policy and ordinance for the public to have the ability to address committees. In the past, there have been chairman that have welcomed participation from residents, not only taking comments, but answering questions and allowing for dialogue when appropriate and necessary. On the other hand, there have been chairman that have done their best to make the public feel, on a good day, merely unwelcome. And I know from firsthand experience what happens on a really, really bad day. I believe in doing what I can to make this community a better place. I volunteer myself to assist with this task, as I would like to see Elmhurst become the standard by which all other communities model their policies regarding public commentary. Thank you.
Thank you.
That concludes public forum.
Very good. I will officially close public forum at this time and go on to item number four, Reports and Recommendations of Appointed and Elected Officials. Item A, Elmhurst City Center 2011 Events, City Manager Borchert.
It's simply a referral with the council's permission to the Public Affairs and Safety Committee.
Okay, very good. And that's just a referral, so we really have to vote on that, correct?
You can have a motion.
You can have a motion in a second to put that.
You can have it on the consent agenda, I think.
Okay. Motion in a second. Alderman Mulliner, Alderman York with a second. Do this by voice vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Say nay. Motion is passed. Referrals to Public Affairs and Safety. Item B, Committee Assignments. Clerk Spencer, if you'd like to read the recommendation?
I don't. I don't have a recommendation with me, unfortunately. Does the city manager help me out? Yes, I'll read it. The following committee assignments are respectfully submitted for your advice and consent. Public Works and Buildings Committee, Jim Kennedy Chairman, Bob Dunn Vice Chairman, Chris Healy, Diane Guttenkopf. Public Affairs and Safety Committee, Patrick Wagner Chairman, Paula Pezza Vice Chairman, Michael Bram. Finance Council Affairs and Administrative Services Committee, Stephen W. Hipskin, excuse me, Chairman, Kevin York Vice Chairman, Mark Mulliner, and Scott Levin. Development Planning and Zoning Committee, Steve Morley Chairman, Danny Polomsky Vice Chairman, Norman Leader. Respectfully submitted, Peter P. DeCiani III, Mayor of Elmhurst.
Thank you. I'd ask for a motion in a second to put the recommendation on the floor, please. Alderman Morley with a motion. Alderman Wagner with a second. Discussion. Alderman Bram.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm viewing this as a missed opportunity, and that's what I actually want to speak to. I'm not looking at what has happened in the past, but I think this was an opportunity that was out there to utilize the talents of the current council. One of the residents of Elmhurst has touched on some of the points that I wanted to make tonight, but I do feel that some of the senior members, and that's myself included, and Alderman Mulliner being the number one and number two senior members, are not being utilized or is being recommended to not be utilized in leadership positions. I think that we've seen in the last two years, and no personal offense on any individual, any alderman, but we've had some inefficiencies when newcomers to the city council are in leadership positions. I think this was an opportunity to streamline and to right that wrong. I think it's very essential that we utilize every single individual here to the best of their abilities. I'll use myself as an example. I'm excited to be appointed to the Public Affairs and Safety Committee. On that individual committee, I have eight years of experience out of my ten on the city council. But in that regard, there is a missed opportunity of using the experience that has been garnered over these past eight years to assist that committee in the full potential that it could be. One of the things that we've talked about in the past is team building. I think with different appointments, I think with utilizing the experience of every single alderman to the best of their ability, I think we could have made some good strides in team building across the dais. The last thing I want to touch upon is it's been stressed to do your best and hash out most of the issues, if not all of the issues, in the committee level, so we could have a very intelligent and well-informed discussion up here in the dais. And I wholeheartedly agree with that, but I think from the standpoint of some of the issues that are coming down the road, for example, again, I will utilize only myself in this example, sidewalk policy discussion. I will no longer be a part, directly a part, of the conversation in the Public Works and Building Committee. And I will note that neither Third Ward Alderman will be a part of that discussion, so therefore will not be, at least in my view, as efficient as it could be if one of the representatives of the Third Ward were on that committee for that discussion. I don't want to narrow my comments down to one particular issue, but I did want to use an example, because I really do think it's crucial to utilize every single member of the council in the best light possible, to make the council as a whole as efficient as possible, as well as making the community as the best as all possible. Thank you.
Thank you. We have a discussion. Questions? Okay. We could do this by voice vote as well. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed?
No.
No.
Okay. That motion passes. Committees are assigned. And to item C, Clerk Spencer, if you could please read the recommendation.
I am so sorry. I am totally unprepared tonight, but city manager is right by my side. We are having tonight the 2011-2013 City Council Orientation Standing Committees' Policy and Project Considerations.
City Manager Borchert, take it away, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And this is really part two of what we started last week. It was an introduction and general overview, went through some legal items, and then past practice and anticipated practice going forward for committee-of-the-whole matters and how the council utilizes community the whole. Tonight, we're looking at the four standing committees. I've got a number of PowerPoint slides to go over. I'm not going to read them all. It's important that they're there for the community, for the council, for reference. All of these items will be embedded in the city council report, which is on the city website, and will be also on the city website going forward under the mayor council pages of the website relative to policies. As to committees, the Elmhurst Municipal Code, Chapter Two, does identify the general work responsibilities of the four standing committees. From this person's individual citizen's perspective and professional perspective as a city manager, these four standing committees are the Elmhurst edge, if you will, relative to an ability of a community to be productive, efficient, and efficient going forward as this community multitasks every second and fourth Monday night, with typically four committees meeting, doing serious city of Elmhurst business in four different locations, and then comes back in a collective fashion with the city council and moves forward with policy approval or policy direction, if necessary, at the council level. Matters are referred to the committee through a process. Typically, it's through the consent agenda, although the code does allow for the mayor and the city manager to also refer matters to the city council. The chairman of the committees set the agendas of these committees with significant input from the staff's liaison representative to the committees. Four standing committees are what were just approved relative to the committee appointments earlier this evening. Public Works Committee, Public Affairs Committee, Finance Committee, and Development Planning and Zoning Committee. Frequently, there'll be an issue that might be a little bit public works, a little bit safety-oriented, and maybe even something associated with planning. And just about everything the city does has got something finance-related to it. But we follow, as a past practice, as identified by the approval of this municipal code, items will be identified into these four committees with the more substantive issue being the controlling item. In that regard, the Public Works Committee has all of these areas of responsibility, and for purposes this evening, will limit the discussion to a report as to the leader of the city staff relative to liaison work. And on the Public Works Committee, that is Michael Hughes, the Director of Public Works. He will bring in from time to time others of his public work staff that assist him to make sure that all of these issues get dealt with appropriately and responsibly at that committee level. Issues going forward that will be brought to the committee's attention will be all major construction projects, the comprehensive plan on flooding. This might be partly in the committee level and partly in the city council committee, the whole level, because it's such a large issue. Downtown, streetscaping issues, environmental sustainability issues. On the water and wastewater side of Public Works, these areas will be coming forward. The design is underway on the anaerobic digester. Funds are being secured through the EPA on loans. The project itself will need to be completed in design in that bid, and that bid process runs through the Public Works Committee. The flooding plan on the sanitary side of our collection system, radio work, storm station landscaping improvements, we're hopeful of receiving a grant on, and again, environmental and sustainability issues. The Safety Committee, Public Affairs and Safety Committee, all matters of licensing, transportation, cultural activities, and safety items are run through this committee. Staff liaisons, depending on that subject matter, would be Brian Berghager, the museum director, police chief, and the fire chief, assistant manager, Mike Kopp. City engineer will be brought in as necessary on some of the public signage issues. The committee will break its work down into these categories of culture activities and safety activities. Liquor control is an item that does fall under the PA&amp;S Committee for Committee Policy Recommendations relative to additional licenses being considered or to controls being applied in a different fashion. Going forward, there is work to be done at the museum site relative to better utilization of information technology as it relates to the information systems, programming work at the one-room schoolhouse that may need some policy review, as well as museum support and fundraising. Other items of Public Affairs and Safety, a big item is the chronic nuisance ordinance and that process. Any item in the Elmhurst community that is chronically involved in code violations will be considered for chronic nuisance. Those areas that are more serious, like suspected drug houses or serious disorderly behavior in neighborhoods, will get the attention of the chronic nuisance process. City council passed this enabling legislation a number of years ago. It is an incredibly powerful tool that is applied well by the city staff, in my perspective, and from a policy perspective, monitored wisely by the city council to solve problems in an effective and efficient fashion. Other items, as necessary, are before the Public Affairs Safety Committee. The item that gets a lot of review and attention is relative to traffic control devices, which is monitored and policy applied based on the manual on uniform traffic control devices. We have provided some additional material to the city council that the city staff uses in handouts for the public, for public education on this area. The city council has passed a policy back in December of 93 that identifies how the city going forward would review and consider stop signs, yield signs, speed control signs, and what that procedure looks like. It is following the federal standard, the state standard, and the standards of that manual. So that will be what certainly the city staff liaison brings to the committee and what the committee looks at going forward. Other areas that will be reviewed short-term by the committee include the DuPage County interoperable radio system. This is to allow police and fire departments across the county to be able to communicate to each other. It's a massive change in the radio system, control system, providing great enhanced service for the police department, fire department personnel, but does require cities and villages to buy pretty expensive radios to then provide for the staff that's responding. Homeland Security items, Smart 911. Smart 911 is a free to the city of Elmhurst and free to Elmhurst residents, enhanced information sharing relative to emergency dispatch. We provided a short press release that's in the press packets tonight and will be reviewed in further meetings by the committee and perhaps by the city council. It'll be in future city newsletters. It's going to be a wonderful program if all of the citizens of the city of Elmhurst would take advantage of this program. Finance Council Affairs and Administrative Services Committee, staff liaison is Marilyn Gaston. And the finance staff, you heard earlier from Mayor DeCiani, some of the fine work done by the finance staff. Finance staff will support all of the activities studied and reviewed by the Finance and Administrative Committee. Short-term and policy considerations looking forward, pretty quickly, the water rate and sewer rate needs to be reviewed. As an aside, watch what is occurring in the city of Chicago. The city of Chicago has water rates, the rate which the DuPage Water Commission enjoys for its water, which it purchases from the city of Chicago, is at the same rate that Chicago charges its residents. We're hearing and understanding of a much changed policy in the city of Chicago. We're in, the city of Chicago is looking at water as a more significant revenue source for the city of Chicago. As they change that water rate to citizens in the city of Chicago, that water rate will change to the DuPage Water Commission, which will change the water charges to all of the citizens in DuPage County that buy their water through their city or village, who buys it from the DuPage Water Commission. So there needs to be a promptness by all of the cities and villages to change their water rates and sewer rates to stay ahead of that changing rate schedule, or the dollars to pay those fees have to come out of fund balance. Other items that are anticipated to be reviewed by the committee, as your committees get started and go forward, are listed, including the Aldermanic Ward boundaries. The state of Illinois legislative districts are being discussed now, getting some newspaper coverage. The city of Elmhurst, as it has seven boundaries of its political areas, the seven wards, every 10 years need to be looked at to make sure that they are balanced properly as identified by the state statute. Typically, it's just balancing it on a population basis. The Finance Committee does this. It makes a recommendation for the city council to consider for going forward. That needs to be done before the next local election. Another item that has been discussed often in the past, not implemented from a policy perspective, there seems to be much stronger interest in this at this time. I believe good projects, good concepts, good ideas, need good timing for implementation. I'm speculating that this is a good timing for electronic agenda packet to be approved in a more comprehensive fashion. Several members, frankly, of the city council are asking now for their agenda packet to be limited to an electronic packet. With a process of approving specific software, the agenda packet could be done much more efficiently electronically than even as it is being done now. The software is called Board Docs. It's used by District 205. The Elmhurst local governmental recommendation would be to use that same software. It would then be used across a couple of different boards serving the city of Elmhurst, and I think improve lots of areas of information sharing with transparency and accessibility. This is a copy of a Board Docs slide from the 205 package. This is a copy of a Board Docs slide from the 205 package. Finance Committee will be looking at that going forward and making recommendations for the City Council to consider. The last committee, then, is the DPZ Committee. Staff liaisons are Chief Kopp with his assistant manager hat on as it relates to building code issues, fire code issues, and development issues, and Thanh Warner, who's the zoning and planning administrator. Areas short-term involving this committee are, as noted, identify bigger issues coming forward in the area of zoning, the central business district height limits, first referenced several years ago in the comprehensive planning process, and central business district planning process are currently actually being evaluated by staff in the zoning and planning commission. Areas in these other categories, we would anticipate, would be shortly coming before the DPZ Committee. Ongoing work on building codes, life safety code, and sustainability considerations are part of that DPZ Committee. Again, very broad, very overarching, but strategic relative to the topics, the subject items. It'll be on the website, if it's not already, be posted on the city website tomorrow. It'll be used by the staff liaisons to the committees, and we would ask that the City Council refer to it as a reference of work that will be brought before those committees on the short term, in addition to certainly all the work that the council brings to the committee's attention through the every-other-week City Council meetings referral process. That's basically the overview we wanted to cover at the Committee the Whole Special Council Meeting Session. We'll take any questions you would have, and then allow for a quick break and for the four committees to meet, for orientation meeting, to allow for the next meeting for the committees to really hit the ground running and making some recommendations. Some of the committees actually have some draft work being completed by the staff, particularly in the area of Public Works, where bids have been received. We've been waiting for that committee to get formed, and it would be, from a timely perspective, appropriate, if possible, for the committee to actually consider those items, so we'd have a committee report for the next City Council meeting. Any questions?
Questions, anyone? Thank you, City Manager Borchert.
Thank you for allowing us to do that. And committee liaisons are assembled and ready, willing, and able. I think they're just waiting for the opportunity to meet with the City Council committees.
Sounds good. After we adjourn, we will be breaking on the committees, just to give everybody a heads up as it reaches on the agenda. Very good. I think our committees are excellent. I think we've got great leadership. I think we've got more women in leadership than we've seen here in a long time. I look forward to working with everyone. And in the end, everyone's vote at a committee level is the same, so whether you're in leadership or you're a committee member. So, we appreciate everybody's hard work, and that's where really the work gets done. It gets done in committees. That's the strength. We have a council of 15 voting officials that we can really dig in and get a lot done. So, and that's the goal. That's what we owe the people, and I appreciate everybody's willingness to do that. With that, and that's for motion to adjourn. Alderman Morley, Alderman Hippskin with a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We're adjourned.[1772.61][1772.61]